Good evening, if you will bow with me for a moment of silent prayer. Amen, if you will rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council meeting, June 25, 2009. I was absent last week on a 40th anniversary trip with my family, and I did not get an opportunity to personally congratulate Mr. Haley upon his being named City Manager of the Year by the Tennessee City Managers Association membership, and I want to publicly congratulate him on that high honor and say it's well deserved, and I think many, many councils probably would have considered you City Manager of the Year every year that you've been City Manager, although there were a couple of years you probably might have come in second or third or fourth down the list, but anyway, my congratulations to you, we're very proud of you, and appreciate your efforts, and really you have an outstanding organization that's recognized you, and that's very meaningful, I know to you, and certainly it is to us and to our residents and business owners, so congratulations to you. Council members, you have before you your consent agenda. If you've had an opportunity to look through that, are there any questions? And if not, are you ready for a motion on the consent agenda?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion, second, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading and ordinance to amend 4.95 acres zone planned residential development, PRD District located along River Bend Drive.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and second, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading and ordinance to annex an area located along Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road.
So moved, seven.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading and ordinance to zone an area located along Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road to a planned commercial development, PCD District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time pursuant to the provisions of TCA 656-206, and the Murfreesboro City Charter, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider the 2009-2010 City of Murfreesboro tentative budget notice of this said public hearing was published in the June 14, 2009 issue of the local newspaper. Is anyone wishing to speak for, against, or about our tentative budget for 2009-2010? Is anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone at all? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider any other changes to the City of Murfreesboro 2009-2010 tentative budget.
Mayor, with your packet tonight, there was a letter included from Recreation and from senior citizens with some minor changes. Both of their changes they requested have already been budgeted. We just want to reallocate them to different line items. They will not make a change to the overall amount due from general fund. Additionally, we've had some employee movement within the city from one position to another that we'd like to make those corrections, which may make very minor changes, could be in our favor when we reprint the budget for the final time once it's approved on third reading.
All right, you have this Senior Citizens Fund adjustment, and then you also have the Parks and Recreation Fund adjustment, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then there are some other line item changes. Do we have those?
No, sir, it's just where this routine, we have some employees that have changed positions either up or down, or moved within one department to another. We'd like to make those changes before we print it for the last time.
All right.
Mayor, or Ms. McGannon, would it be appropriate just one motion to accept the recommendations of the city recorder? I'll make that motion then.
Second.
Thank you, a motion and second. Are there any questions on that motion? All right, this is on the changes to the budget. We have a motion and a second, call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider adopting the City of Murfreesboro tentative budget for 2009-2010 as the 2009-2010 City of Murfreesboro budget. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion and second. Any questions on this motion? If not, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading and ordinance setting the tax rate at $1.4070.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading and ordinance the appropriations ordinance.
So moved, second.
Motion and second, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Consider now for adoption a resolution approving the budget of the Stormwater Utility Management Fund for the fiscal year 2009-2010.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider an amendment to the 2009-2010 Water and Sewer Department budget, and also consider for adoption a resolution approving the budget of the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department for the fiscal year 2009-2010.
Mayor, there's a corrected copy of the summary that was put on your desk tonight. There was a, you made one correction, a position was budgeted at 40 hours per week, and it's a 37 and a half hour position, so it changed the budget by 2,000, the salary budget by 2,550 some odd dollars. That's the only change. The budget that you have, the document is corrected, and we, the summary that's provided has been corrected to reflect that.
All right, are there any questions on this amendment? If not, is there a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved, second.
Motion and second, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg. Mayor Bragg.
Aye. All right, at this time, with, as amended, would you consider for adoption the resolution approving the budget of the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department for the fiscal year 2009-2010?
So moved.
You want to try again, Mr. Young?
Will you want a second, sir?
Please.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and second. Give him a little time, Ms. Wright, this time.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Kurtzner. This time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution approving the budget of the Evergreen Cemetery for the fiscal year 2009-2010.
So moved, second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution approving the budget of the Murfreesboro City Schools for the fiscal year 2009-2010, which budget includes the General Purpose Fund, the Federal Projects Fund, the ESP Fund, and the Cafeteria Fund.
So moved, second.
Motion and second, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing to consider annexation of an area along Thompson Lane. Ms. Adelot, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. During this regular meeting on June 17, 2009, the Murfreesboro Plan Commission considered and recommended approval of the following matter that would need to be scheduled for a public hearing, and that is an annexation of 16.11 acres along West Thompson Lane.
Ms. McGannon?
Mayor, the council already has public hearings set for July 30. I therefore believe that will be an appropriate date.
All right, council members, you have July 30, when you already have a public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adelot. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the environmental engineer with regards to the old city landfill on West College Street, a gas management program, active gas extraction unit installation and operation and maintenance proposal, as well as a pilot gas extraction system monthly operation and maintenance proposal. Welcome, Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the city council. We have two items tonight, as Mayor mentioned. Just a little bit of background, when we closed the old landfill in 2004, we installed a passive gas system there. We've monitored that system for several years now and have detected elevated levels of landfill gases. In October of 2008, we discovered that those landfill gases were migrating into the Gateway Pond. We took immediate actions to control those gases and installed a pilot gas extraction testing system, or gas extraction system, and that's been operating almost continuously since that time. We're demonstrating good control of the levels of methane at the landfill now, and it's time really for us to go from pilot test to a long-term active test. Griggs and Maloney's are environmental consultant on this, and they've made two recommendations regarding long-term operation and maintenance of those facilities. Under item A, our consultant reviewed their data, and we have developed operating parameters for a long-term system. We solicited proposals from vendors who provide those systems. We received two quotes. One of those quotes was judged to be non-responsive because it did not address all of the items in the request, and so our consultant, Griggs and Maloney, has made a recommendation. We accept the proposal of John Zink for manufacturer installation startup of the unit, which we anticipate to require 16 to 20 weeks. We do anticipate the active gas extraction system will have to operate for some time, months, or even perhaps years, and it's not unusual for closed landfills to generate methane for many, many years, and we cannot make an accurate prediction of how long the old city landfill will continue to generate methane. Griggs and Maloney also provided an estimate of the maintenance, reporting, meetings, and operation and maintenance costs for the gas extraction system, for this active system, and as summarized in my memorandum to you, the estimated bus budget for the installation startup and manufacturer is $160,000, $160,100, and the monthly operating and maintenance budget is estimated to be $8,200 per month. We suggest that we establish that budget, operating budget, from January 1 of 2010 through June 30 of 2010, and at that point, we'll be able to budget that in a department budget and make that part of the normal city budget for the year. With the estimated installation maintenance, installation and manufacturer cost and the operating and maintenance cost, the budget that we're asking you to approve tonight is $209,300. We've reviewed this proposal with Mr. Haley, and we recommend that you approve it with funding to come from unforeseen. Be glad to answer any questions on item A.
It's going to come from 2009-2010 unforeseen? And this says a flare, is that right?
It's extraction unit with a, with a built-in flare with that.
So all it does is burn the excess gas?
It burns the excess gas, and when gas concentrations are high enough, it burns them on a sustained combustion. If gas concentrations are too low to support combustion, we have supplemental propane unit that elevates the concentration to make it burnable.
So you cannot use this methane?
The concentrations and the mass is not enough to have any sort of commercial benefit, and the state air pollution control folks want us to destroy the methane through combustion rather than just discharging it to the atmosphere. Very low, it's very low mass. The old city landfill is a very small landfill, as landfills go. Certainly, we're aware of other landfills in the area and in the state that have methane recovery systems and cogeneration facilities off of that, but there's just not enough gas here to make that a feasible alternative.
That was my question. Other questions from the council on this active gas extraction unit installation and operation maintenance proposal?
Ms. Huddleston, will that, that area be basically green space from now on?
Certainly, we anticipate it to be used as a part of the Gateway Reception Center Gateway Trail, and as you're aware, we have the trail that encompasses a good bit of the old landfill. It's certainly within the realm of possibilities that that could have some alternate uses. We've talked about several of those. We have not finalized any approach or plans on that, but it's certainly possible that could have some alternate uses from that. We wouldn't expect any buildings, but we could certainly do other things with that, parking, for example, or other amenities to go with our, our other things in the area.
Mr. Young, with what you're being asked to consider tonight, staff's talked about the possibility of being able to, in the very near future, remove the vent pipes that you see that are on the perimeter of the old landfill, as well as the bollards that protect those vent pipes, to make that a clear, open, green space, and we've had several conversations with Parks and Recreation about a passive recreational use in that area.
Thank you, sir.
So, Ms. Huddleston, just to understand, when we took this back, November of '08, we made it an active system, we're now converting that over to make it more of a permanent that?
That's correct. The initial six months or so since November, we've been pilot testing, collecting data, evaluating the performance of the system. The unit that we have out there is a rental unit, and it is really oversized for the job, so monthly operation and maintenance is a little bit excessive for us with the information we've collected. Now, we're able to right-size, if you will, the, a long-term gas extraction unit.
And I guess we monitor, and like we're talking about monitoring that on a monthly basis, but at some point, we will be able to monitor the levels to know when we can hopefully stop doing it.
Shut her down, that's right. The goal here is to eventually reach a point where the landfill gases are not a problem. We can turn the unit off, we'll probably keep it on standby and continue to monitor for, for some time after that, but at some point, we'll be able to, to turn the system off and completely disconnect it, and that would occur when the, when the methane capacity of the landfill is, is approached at zero or diminished.
All right, you have this first recommendation to approve the active gas extraction system installation proposal and the monthly operation and maintenance proposal. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Then you also have a second recommendation for the monthly operation and maintenance of the existing pilot gas extraction system. What are your wishes there?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Huddleston. This time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution to prohibit handguns in municipal parks, natural areas, historic parks, nature trails, campgrounds, forests, greenways, waterways, ball fields, golf courses, sports complexes, community recreation centers, and other similar public places. Mr. Haley.
Mayor Bragg, members of the council, as you know, the General Assembly just modified the law which makes carrying weapons in municipally-owned parks and recreational amenities a misdemeanor in order to allow persons who are authorized to carry handguns to carry them at those facilities, beginning September 1 of this year. Local governments have the option of maintaining the status quo of prohibiting by voting to do so. Mr. Goodman at the Parks and Recreation Department, Mr. Tracy Wilkins, Old Ford Golf Director, and I believe that the status quo should be maintained for the safety and enjoyment of the users of the city's outstanding and diverse recreational facilities. Police Chief Crispin is also supportive of this resolution. The model ordinance prepared by MTS is the basis for the resolution that has been submitted to you. A copy, copy of public chapter 428 is also attached for your reference, and if you would like copies of any of the statutes it references, Ms. McGannon will be happy to provide them. Mayor and council, this is in no way our attempt to interfere with second amendment rights of the public. We understand and certainly support the Constitution. What we do believe that this proposal would do for this community is to allow us to continue to provide a safe and environment for our children, as well as the public that utilize our Parks and Recreation facilities. We see no need for anyone to want to carry a weapon, a gun, in a park, the ball fields, the soccer fields, McKnight Sportscom, Patterson Center, and we would recommend this in an attempt to, again, keep these facilities as peaceful and appealing to the, to the public as we believe they are today, and we don't think that the adoption of this resolution or the acceptance of our recommendation would interfere, again, with the public's use in a safe manner of those facilities. But this is brought to you, this is an option that the pending legislation does make available to local communities. It's one that your staff proposes and supports, and we bring it to you for your consideration.
It's one your staff opposes and supports.
We propose that you exercise the option.
Okay. Will this affect our spring fling? Because we either allow the state's ruling to stand and our ordinance to be superseded, does that have any effect on spring fling and our ability to furnish facilities for spring fling? In other words, does TWSAA have a, are they in compliance? Will they allow the state's rules to be there or not?
Mayor, I believe, I don't know, I'm unaware if TWSAA has any endorsement or made a position, taken a position on the state law.
Could we do some research on that before we vote or consider this particular resolution? I'd hate to lose spring fling because we either allow or don't allow based on whatever their board wants with our facilities.
Well, yes or certain, we can.
I mean, I, I mean, I'd like to get that question answered at least, and there may be other questions from council members, or there may be some other parts of this that they would like to discuss, but I realize that, you know, this is fairly a big change for our city, and I have absolutely no problem complying with what the state wants us to do or doing what the council wants to do, but I'd still like to have that question answered before we consider any resolution.
Ms. McGannon, taking no action on the resolution would, in essence, come September 1, bring us into compliance with, or exercise what the state law would then become, and guns would be allowed in our parks, is that correct?
Well, if no action is taken, as of September 1, guns would be allowed, that's correct. But both options are in compliant with state law.
Right, but what I guess I'm getting at is if it's the desire of the council to allow for guns in the parks, that means that we would take no action on the resolution would achieve that, that goal. That's my feeling about the situation. I'm a strong proponent that we allow, now the state law is allowing that, that we allow to citizens who are law-abiding and have the permits to be able to carry them into the parks, the greenway, and so forth.
Any other comments on this resolution? If there's no motion at this time, then we'd put this off until we have an opportunity to get some answer from TWSAA as to whether compliance or whatever would allow, would have any effect on spring fling and our ability to hold that activity here in our city.
We'll be happy to contact.
Is there a motion on the resolution?
Move to defer.
All right, motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second to defer this resolution. Any questions?
One comment, Mayor, I'll be voting against deferral because I simply don't see the need for it to come back up. I would rather September 1 come and we allow our citizens the right to carry the weapons.
All right, there's a motion to defer. Call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you. At this time, we'll consider any beer permit applications.
Mayor, we have two tonight. One is a change of ownership of a convenience store at 202 North Thompson Lane, Suite F. The other is a new restaurant location at 1958 Oakport Parkway. The restaurant location is in its final building code inspections. They did not finish them in time for me to bring anything tonight, but we would like to issue this permit as soon as those are completed, and everything else that we have on these are in compliance.
All right, both these applications meet the requirements or are expected to, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to accept these beer permit applications?
So moved. Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You have before you a revised list of the statements to be considered for payment at this time. Are there any questions regarding any of those statements? If not, is there a motion to pay the bills?
Pay the bills, Mayor. Second.
All right, we have a motion to pay the bills. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider any other business from the council or the staff to come before the council. Mr. Calo, first.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Murfreesboro has been allocated $110,232 by Tennessee Housing Development Agency through the Emergency Shelter Grant Program. This money is used to assist those who are homeless and those who would be homeless but for these funds. We recommend accepting this grant and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with THDA. We're proposing to allocate the funds, should you agree to accept them, as follows. This is the same table that was in our action plan, which you approved several months ago.
All right, are there any questions of Mr. Calo on this THDA Emergency Shelter Grant Program?
No questions, may I move, we accept his recommendation?
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Calo. Other business? Mr. Griffith, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and members of the City Council. I laid a package on your desk before council, before the meeting tonight. It's the reconstruction of Greenland Drive from the Reeves Rogers School to Shawnee Drive. We continue to experience substantial maintenance problem in this section of Greenland Drive near the Reeves Rogers School area. I've attached a site map for your reference also with your package. The existing road is a three-lane section with curb and gutter with intermittent sidewalk, and its original construction by the county dates back prior to the 1950s. As traffic volumes have continued to increase due to university and residential development, maintenance of the roadway has became a continual process. Staff proposes to rebuild approximately 1,600 linear feet section of the three-lane roadway and increase the existing pavement section to better withstand the traffic loadings. We also propose to replace the curb and gutter, which is beginning to deteriorate at several locations also. We'll replace it for the entire length. Finally, we also want to add sidewalk as needed, which will provide us a continuous segment from Rutherford Boulevard back to the Reeves Rogers School. Based on the cost that we incurred for the Rutherford Boulevard work that we just completed or completed last year there from Greenland back to MTSU, we estimate this project will cost between $1 and $1.2 million. If approved, we recommend funding of the project from the general fund, from reserves. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I would like to make one addition to that, and Mr. Griffith is right, we discussed from reserves, but in order to leave our options open, would like to add the language, should council approve this or future TML funds. That leaves our options open.
Mr. Griffith, I'm looking at your map, sir. There's a small section between Rutherford and your red end line. Is that, was that brought up to our standards when we did Rutherford?
It wasn't brought in.
Or standard?
Yes, it is to our, it is a three-lane section, and we did inspect that area, and there wasn't any noticeable, noticeable rutting or any type of breaking up of the pavement as there was in some other areas. Would say that we could, as an option, we could possibly just resurface that up to that area, and that would give us a completely new roadway, not only on Rutherford but on that section, and then also, of course, the county. We're currently in jointly working with the county on Halls Hill Pike, which is out further to the east of this location.
Also, in that section, if we can, if we don't have sufficient easements or sidewalks, if the property owners will donate the easements required to extend the sidewalks up to Rutherford, we would propose that we be authorized to put sidewalks in on one or both sides of that area.
Mr. Griffith, I guess my question is, I know this is a pretty good picture because the GIS map that we have on South Rutherford that actually shows where we were doing all the patchwork over the years. I mean, this is before we did the work that we did on Rutherford, because I know at the time I questioned on linear footage how expensive that road was, but I drive, and I know there's, most people are on Greenland Drive quite a bit, but is the road, I'm not noticed it being that bad, is it, I mean, is it that bad?
It's just in a, really, a select, just selected area. We looked, we looked at the possibility of just repairing just certain segments, and then when we got into it, the segments became so long, there was obvious that the cracking, initial cracking had begun, and that even though it might not certainly be rough to the drive, that it was, it was a problem waiting to happen. And then there's a substantial portion of this that has to be patched and overlaid on an annual basis.
Because, I mean, we're basically, what we're talking about is undercutting the entire road, like we did on Rutherford Boulevard.
On Rutherford Boulevard, we didn't actually have to get into an undercutting situation. We actually just provide, provided a thicker pavement section, if you will. We're estimating it'll be a seventeen and a half foot, or seventeen and a half inch thick pavement section, about nine and a half inches of asphalt and about eight inches of stone. We've done some corrings in that roadway, which indicates that we don't have any base stone in some of the areas, which is not uncommon for some of our older roadways that have been patched or overlaid over a period of time, but it's just, it's really just a, in more than a base problem, where we're actually, the ground's failing underneath it, it's just the pavement is not holding up to the, to the traffic that's on it.
We've got, we've got some areas where the mud, dirt, is actually coming up through the alligator cracking in the asphalt, the subsurface conditions there. In our discussions, just proved that the first choice, the first thing, the first option that we looked at was just, again, repairing it, as we've done about every two years. We're spending $200,000 to $400,000 about every two, three years making repairs, and the increased usage and traffic in the area, where we used to get three years, four years out of repairs, we're down to about every two years now, and just, it just got to the point where it just doesn't make sense to keep spending money putting a patch on it when we know it's not going to help.
We've also gotten several requests. It's one of our, one of our more numbered requests that we've gotten as far as for sidewalks in the Reeves Rogers School area. Right now, it's intermittent, it's sidewalks for a couple hundred feet, and...
I run that area, and I know you have to hop off-road on a sidewalk, but...
We don't have, there's currently no handicap ramps. It's not ADA accessible in that particular area, so we certainly wanted to make that part of this. The sidewalk, and I apologize, I didn't give you a breakdown between the two. Our sidewalk estimate is in the $200,000, $250,000 range for, to add the sidewalks that we need, with the rest of that being the roadway.
I don't disagree that it needs to be done, you know, but I guess probably part of me, we're looking over, and we've pushed so hard on the budget, we're looking at, you know, a $1.2 million to $1 million increase on a 1,600 linear foot section, and I know, in my opinion, I mean, I drive, a good example, I know we've gone back and forth on this over the years, but, you know, we've got several roads that have severe traffic that are in major need right now of repaving, and I know we try to coincide that with widening and different things that we talk about, Haynes Drive being one of those, but I guess, is this our best bang for our buck to, that we feel like we've got, you know, we have to do this?
Well, we do have other projects coming to you in the future, one specifically that we're working on now being a Haynes Drive, some work in some curves and some repaving of that area, but I would certainly put this, and we had Mr. Templeton, sir, the street director, be happy to hear from him, I would put this in our top five as far as maintenance problems in the, in the city, along with the Haynes Drive, which is currently on this year's paving schedule also. So I agree with you, with the, with the budget this year and how tight things are, we really tried to narrow it down as much as we could, because my immediate reaction was just to go in and go all the way from Reeves Rogers all the way and rebuild it all the way up to Rutherford, but I was really trying to control the budget as much as we could and how much it would cost.
Mayor, we would like to ask council, we mentioned putting sidewalks, making sidewalks as a part of this project where they don't currently exist. If council would want to give us some direction about if in the event we don't receive donations of the easements for those sidewalks, would you want to authorize condemnation so we can move the project forward, or we can always come back to you with a report as to where we, where we might stand on that. As we start, as we propose to start the project, your direction along that land would be helpful.
Mr. Haley, in response, I have two things in response to your question. I think probably, can we not revisit the condemnation issue if necessary, if we see how we get along with the donation of easement, or do you need an answer on authorizing condemnation now? Does, if you and Ms. McGannon can advise us as to what's the most streamlined approach, most efficient approach in that regard?
We would, we would want council to understand that if y'all authorize us to get started on this project, we would propose that it be started immediately and with an attempt to have about a 60 to 70-day construction period from start to finish, and in doing so, that can, if we run into a problem on sidewalks, we won't have a problem on the road because we're going to use certainly the existing right-of-way for that.
Are we, are we at, so we're looking at starting immediately?
Yes.
So is that going to put us right at the start of MTSU while we've got that road all tore up?
Any time you do it, you're going to have some interference with university traffic, but we were very successful, we believe, in the attempts to keep Rutherford open while that project was being done last year, and we would anticipate being, we know we've got to keep traffic flowing, and being a three-lane cross-section gives you the opportunity to, you'll have some interruption, but you won't be shut down.
And you'll have Reeves Rogers starting back in about three weeks or so, I guess?
We're actually, we're planning on starting the work on that side so we can, we can push...
Shift over, away from, because I think that school starts back last week, July, maybe?
I believe you're right, yes.
Other questions on this recommendation? Anything else? All right, you have this proposal to rebuild this section of Greenland Drive and also to replace curb and gutter, and to work toward carrying the sidewalks as needed to provide a continuous segment from the Reeves Rogers School to Rutherford with the donation of right-of-way from those affected properties. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I do have an issue with the timing. That's really my issue. I'm pretty sure, Chris, you did a wonderful job, and it needs to be done, but I do, I have a little bit of an issue with the timing. Well, 60-day project, it would've been real nice to start that thing in May, but that window's gone. I'm just making that point.
If we don't do this project, then we're going to wind up spending $200,000, $300,000, because we've got to repair it.
You don't have to repaint it anyway.
We've either got to repair it or replace it. And our estimation of the right project to do is to replace it, because you're going to be two years from now, you're going to be, you'll be right back where you are today.
Have we, have we started the bidding process on it yet?
No, you just...
Well, that's the good thing about, you can do this under your maintenance contract, because you've already got your unit prices, and they're still very competitive.
And we, on the Rutherford Boulevard project, we used, we used all three of our maintenance contracts, if I'm not mistaken, S&amp;W, Hoover, and Robbins.
Mr. Washington, one thing we don't see on that, we won't have on this one that you have on a lot of projects, are the utilities, involvement with utilities, because we don't propose to be...
No upgrades?
Sir?
No upgrades?
No. No, sir.
So we know we can do it in 70 good weather days?
Well, you always leave yourself out, the out, because we don't know what the weather's going to do. If it's, if we have a typical July through September, it shouldn't be a problem enough.
I second the motion.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
Reluctantly.
Pardon me?
Reluctantly.
So, I mean, really, we're in a, it's either spend $200,000 or $300,000 and patch it or fix it and...
And be done with it.
And get five to 10 years out of it.
Surely it'd be more than five to 10 years.
I would think.
I think the pavement schedule's about every 10 years then.
About every 10 to 15.
But that's just...
That's not going back and doing the whole.
No. That's just your typical pavement.
So if we don't do this, we spend on the high end $400 this year, two years later, the equivalent of today's dollars of a million, too, at a minimum, at that point of a million six, we'll cut it down today at a million to a million two.
That's right.
The traffic's going to continue to build on. It's a 50-year-old road, Greenland Drive, Halls Hill Pike, same thing we ran into with Rutherford Boulevard, corrows, it's got to be redone.
Any other questions or comments? Are you ready to vote? Call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Any other business to come before the council at this time?
Yes, Mayor.
Ms. McGannon?
On your table tonight, you had a cover letter and two contracts with the VA that it asked you to consider. The first is for a one-month extension of the current fire services contract at its current rate of $65,000 a month. It became necessary to extend the contract because of the timing of the information going to the VA and the additional documentation. That one page, one-month extension is attached. The second is the new land lease for the VA golf course premises. We are structuring both contracts so that they would expire at the end of April to make it easier to include any dollars in the city budget. So that's why it's not a three-year contract as prior contracts had been. The only other difference from the current contract is that the area that is not part of the golf course, that the city had had the responsibility to bush hog, possible future additional recreational uses is not included. And there is a provision in there that, to the extent revenues exceed expenses the VA gets, 5% of that, that has not happened, and it's not expected to happen. So it's basically creating obligations on the city to maintain the golf course, certain description about what needs to be done, but that's what's currently being done. I'd be happy to answer questions about either.
Any questions for Ms. McGannon on, number one, either the one-month extension or, two, the new land lease for the VA premises?
I appreciate staff's continued work on this albatross, as it were. I know there are many things you're going to miss about your job. I bet the negotiations on this are probably not on that list, though, are they?
No, she is not.
With that, Mayor, I move we approve the recommendation of the city attorney.
All right. The first one is the one-month extension. There's a motion that we accept the one-month extension. Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli, how about the new land lease? Would you...
Move to prove that to you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, I'd like to recommend reappointment to the St. Clair Senior Center of Mr. Bruce Duncan, Ms. Ida Fraser, Ms. Joyce Ely, and Father James Caloracken, and also to appoint Ms. Annie Ruth Usleton to the St. Clair Senior Center Board. I also would like to appoint Michael Baggerly to the City Hall Art Committee. I have those recommendations for you.
May we approve the mayor's recommendation?
Second.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, is there any other business to come before the council? If not, you're adjourned.